I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the December 27th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. Meeting documents are in the corner in the white folder. And if you were going to speak at the podium, to sign in. And I think everybody in this room knows those rules because everybody else is still on vacation. With that, we'll move on to routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to amend the agenda to move item eight A, authorize the sheriff's office to submit an application for the fiscal year 2022 SCAAP, oops, SCAAP grant and item eight B, authorizing the commission chairman to sign the 2023 vehicle lease agreement with Fern ID Motor Cars, Inc., from the consent agenda to the regular agenda following item thirty, authorizing the chairman to sign agreements for mental health, legal representation, and also to pull item number six off of the agenda. So is there a motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number one B, that was one A, one B is consider a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Then we have consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Consent agenda, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Move on to regular business. Item number ten is authorize the chairman to sign the joint cooperative amended agreement between Minnehaw County and the city of Sioux Falls.
Carol Muller, Commission Office. Good morning. Yes, before you today is amendment to the agreement that we have for the city of Sioux Falls for Health and Human Services. I think most people are aware of the fact that that is a joint building. County owned city leases from us and it's been a great relationship. They're getting ready to do some remodeling downstairs. That agreement you will see in January come before you. So this is separate than this. In the meantime, if I can ask Jake to pull up the second floor, Jake? Oh, sorry. The second floor, you'll scroll down quite a while, quite a ways, down to the floor plan. The only thing this agreement changes is the percentage of the space. Yes, that one. Thank you very, thank you very much. In the past, on the top right-hand side, there's that reddish color to it and that was what multicultural center used for classrooms. They're no longer using those. So the health department is taking that over. So with the addition of that space, the split goes from seventy-four point four percent for the city and twenty-five point six for the county. It changes it by about two points to seventy-six point four six percent for the county and twenty-three point five three for the county. And bills, utilities, cleaning, all those types of things use that split. So that's why we dug into it. So and the nice thing about it is we've actually got cleaned up floor plans in this process.
Any questions for Carol? Is there any questions for the public? Motion?
Move, excuse me, move for approval.
A second. The motion is second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number eleven is authorize the chairman to sign an amendment to the agreement dated November 12, 2019 between pictometry international co-op and the Minnehaw County South Dakota.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, Planning Director. Today is an amendment to a contract that we have with Eagleview for our pictometry, our aerial photography that we use for our GIS. You can see it has been reviewed by the state's attorney and deemed to be okay. So I would ask that you approve it today. And in the audience with me is Heidi Yurkey. She's our GIS coordinator in case you have any detailed specific questions. This flyover would take place. So they will be doing new imagery next typically April. We fly before, the snow has to be gone, but we want leaf off. So April sometime depending on the weather and the conditions.
Questions for Scott?
Scott, how often do we do this?
Every three or three years, I think. Is it every three years? I didn't, wasn't sure if it was three or four, but every three years.
And we hand this over to our equalization people also, right?
Well, yes, there's many, many departments that use it. Like I said, it's vital for our GIS. So you know, the public sees it. And if you think about it, in the, in the last three years, just in the county, we've added probably close to a hundred and fifty new residences. So all of our imagery doesn't show that. So it'll be nice to have that updated because many, many people use that. Equalization uses it, the sheriff uses it, various volunteer fire departments, there's, it's just every, it's used by the general public immensely.
Any questions for Scott? Other questions? Questions from the public? Okay, is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number twelve is consider a bid results and award recommendations for Minnehaw County seventeen dash ten highway one forty-nine culverts and grading and authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Midwest Contracting, Incorporated. Bids were opened on December seventh, 2022. Steve, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner. Steve Grolin, Highway Superintendent. As you may recall, we bid this project a year ago and pricing came in almost double what we had budgeted. So we went back and relooked at this project, worked with the engineering firm and changed the scope so we can get closer to the original budget for this project. This year, we're just going to do some grading, structures and culverts. There'll be two other phases the following two years. And instead of doing a complete reconstruction, we're going to be doing what's called a cold in place recycle where we grind up the asphalt and some gravel, use that to widen the road, then we'll come in and pave. Not too many people around here have been doing cold in place recycle, but we were using it quite successfully in the Twin Cities before I came down here. This price did come in twenty-six percent above budget, but we did have two other structures that we've decided to hold off on, which will make up the difference of the six hundred thousand on our budget. So we're asking your approval to commence with this long awaited project.
Any questions for Steve? Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, word on the street, Steve, is everything's coming in significantly over budget. Twenty percent is probably the minimum over budget. Is that what you're seeing?
Yeah, actually, we did a bid opening a week and, about two weeks ago to do a deck overlay that came in thirty-eight percent over budget. And you're going to see a commission agenda item next week to reject those bids.
The budget, is that set by engineering estimates or how is that budget determined?
Engineering estimates. Typically, they're a year old. And fortunately, we've been able to take some of these high bid prices and we're reworking our estimates for our bridge improvement grant applications that are going in at the end of the week. So the ones that we're going to be getting, hopefully getting awarded later will be submitting higher costs based on current pricing.
Thank you.
Is there any questions from the public? I'd look for a motion, please.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Steve, would you just give us a quick road update from this weekend? I'm assuming you're leaving because I don't think you're on anymore of this agenda. And so if you would just give us a quick update, that would be great.
Our staff worked a lot hours the last two weeks from the last two storms. We had a lot of calls on Thursday night. Roads like the Western Avenue in Hartford was completely plugged. We had a deputy who was stuck in the north part of the county. So we actually did have to bring crews back in later overnight to help get the deputy out. So we sent him down to Western. We had a pretty good handle on everything by Saturday afternoon. So we let our crews have Sunday and Monday off. But we're out full speed today with blowers and wings pushing back. There's some video that I posted on my LinkedIn page. If you're curious, there's some other on our Highway Department Facebook page. Kelo and other people have been calling a lot. They, Jacob Mars, our Assistant Superintendent, was out Saturday with the drone and took some video that Kelo showed on their newscast. And it's just been a lot of hours, but the public's been great. We've been getting some good, more compliments than criticism. And it's going to be a busy couple of days here to get caught up before the next possible event either on Thursday or Monday. But I just want to thank our staff. We have a very dedicated group of operators out there. And Hank Trumbull, our operations manager, put in a lot of hours also and took care of a lot of our issues before anybody else gets phone calls.
It was quite the weekend for everybody. You were lucky if you were staying home. I did think about you guys a lot because I thought they're out here on the road when we're all sitting warm in our house. So.
Yeah, thank you very much.
To the staff, yep. Okay, we'll move on to item number thirteen, which is a briefing on the Minnehaw County Investment Program. Treasurer Swanson.
Morning. Chris Swanson, County Treasurer. So at our August sixteenth commission meeting, we discussed how we could invest, maximize our return on investment since our inflation rate has become so high. So what we had done initially was we had contacted some local investment companies in Sioux Falls, excuse me. But due to state regulations on how public entities can invest, we kind of put that on the back burner and we went with South Dakota FIT. And South Dakota FIT is South Dakota Public Funds Investment Trust, which is a cash management service for counties. Minnehaw County already has an account with them. They've had it since the early nineteen nineties. We did go over to the city and visited with them over there because they use South Dakota FIT and kind of got a rundown on how, you know, the pros and cons of what they do. And they really encouraged us to go ahead and use South Dakota FIT. So we did. So with my office, the treasurer's office, the auditor's office, and then the commission, we got together and decided how much we wanted to invest in this, in the South Dakota FIT program. We actually identified an amount we wanted to invest in a twelve-month treasury bill, which is something new for me. It's been kind of interesting to learn that. Since starting with the South Dakota FIT though, we have now developed an internal group consisting of myself, the commissioner, Tyler and Carol, and then, I'm sorry, Ben and Susan. We've gotten together monthly and we discuss investment amounts, maturity dates, just things like that to kind of keep me, basically teaching me more about this treasury bond stuff, which is really intriguing to me. As right now, we are earning an additional two point three percent in interest over what we were earning in August, which I think two point three might be even a little bit not, you know, it's not as generous as I, it's, I think it's more, honestly is what I think. So, but that's kind of a rundown on what we're doing right now. Yeah.
Are there any questions for Auditor Swanson this morning? Thanks, Chris. I know it's been a learning curve. It would be a learning curve for me if I was doing.
It's very interesting. It's very interesting. So.
We're thankful for the commission office and the auditor's office also stepping up and helping us.
Yes, I do appreciate that.
Invest that money better.
It's been great. It's been great.
Thank you. Is there any questions for the public on that? Item number fourteen is an adopted resolution establishing elected department heads twenty-two-three annual salary. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning, Carrie Dever from Human Resources. In front of you is a resolution that was drafted based on the discussion that was held last week on elected official salaries. You'll recall that there's really two sections. One, that sets base pay amounts for anybody who maybe is interested in running for office or taking office. And the second portion actually sets the salaries for people who are in office as of today. Do you have any questions on the draft resolution?
Any questions? Any questions from the public? Is there a motion? Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen is a public hearing to consider a supplement budget request for the twenty-two-two annual budget. Susan Beeman, good morning, Susan.
Good morning, Susan Beeman with the auditor's office. On the December sixth meeting, you approved the posting of notice of hearing for today. We have a number of budget supplement requests that have come forward. Everything that's in this briefing memo is what you saw on the December sixth hearing notice, with the exception of an additional item of nine thousand dollars for the planning department. As part of their twenty-two-two budget, they had been approved to purchase a new vehicle. They had that, they had that ordered, but then the dealership canceled that order due to supply chain issues. But they were able to secure a twenty-two-three vehicle at twenty-three pricing, which was obviously higher, which is why they were needing the additional nine thousand dollar supplement. I won't go through all of this in detail unless you have any specific questions. There's a lot in there. So I don't want to go through it in complete detail. But they includes general fund, the twenty-four sobriety fund, the fire protection fund, the domestic abuse fund, the museum enterprise fund, the bond redemption fund, and capital projects fund.
Are there questions for Susan? Is there questions from the public? Okay, then I would look for a motion on the budget supplement.
Motion to approve the supplements. I'll second that.
Any other questions? Commissioner Benega?
Susan, are any of the supplements that were requested, can any of those be used to, from the ARPA funding, dollar amounts?
Some of them are. And so the, these are needed to supplement the budget that's in the general fund or other funds for the departments. And you'll see this coming up on the ARPA supplement. ARPA allows for reasonable salary increases, like adjustments to compensation to help a public sector capacity. So those departments that had overages due to the matrix adjustment, those are going to be helped reimbursed into the general fund through the ARPA funding.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions? I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number sixteen is consider a motion to authorize the twenty-two-two budget supplement request using grants, donations, and reimbursements.
So you're, we're going to have four different motions in front of you for grants and donations and reimbursements. The first one that's in front of you is just an overall cover letter indicating that they're really coming from four main groups. The emergency management department, the sheriff's office, human services, as well as just some, a number of variety ones that the auditor's office is presenting. So the first one in front of you to approve is the one from the auditor's office. The majority of these are routine items. Jake, if you want to scroll down one page. The ones that are unique this year are the commission office has a ninety thousand, two hundred dollar one that's related to that Just Home project through Urban Institute and the Mark Arthur Foundation. And then as well as the Safe Home Camera donation from the city of Sioux Falls where the city helped provide funding to upgrade the security equipment at the Safe Home. And that was a agreement that you guys had signed within the last couple of months. And then as well as, we have an eight million, four hundred and fifty thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollar supplement for the ARPA fund. And so the ARPA list is on about four pages of items. So I won't go through that in detail.
Are there any other questions on item number sixteen? Then I would look for a motion on sixteen.
Move approval. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen is consider a motion to authorize a twenty-two-two budget supplement requesting using grants, donations, and reimbursements for emergency management.
Before you, there are three requests for emergency management grant funding and donation funding from Homeland Security and Police and Reserve donations. Joe Bossman is here from the sheriff's office if you happen to have any questions on this item.
Are there any questions for Susan or Joe? Any questions from the audience? And I need a motion on seventeen.
Move for approval. Benega. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item nineteen or eighteen is consider a motion to authorize the twenty-two-two budget supplement request using grants, donations, and reimbursements for the sheriff's office and the jail.
Yes, in front of you, there are numerous donation and reimbursements and grant supplements from the sheriff's office and the jail. Again, I won't go through any of this in detail unless you guys have any specific question. And Joe is here for questions if you have any.
Are there questions on number eighteen?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
We do publish all those items in minutes, right? I mean, so.
Yes, this is all part of that.
Thank you.
And also online on the Minnehaw County website. So if you're looking for some of this stuff, you can find it. Any questions from the public? A motion, please.
I'll make the motion.
A second. The motion is second for the grants for the sheriffs and the jail. Roll call vote, please.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Always a shock when I get called on first.
Quit sleeping. Item number nineteen, consider a motion to authorize a twenty-two-two budget supplement request using grants, donations, and reimbursements for South Dakota Cares.
Yes. One thing I want to point out on this, there is a small typo on the top paragraph under action requested. The number on the, the first number under that paragraph, the one hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. There, there was an extra period in there between the five and the two. So I just want to call that out. It is correct in the body of the memo, but just that was a typo in that section. So there are two different components of the South Dakota Cares funding that were in effect during twenty-two-two, which is why there's two different supplements. The ERA one funding was for a hundred and thirty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars and twenty cents. And the ERA two funding is for four million, seven hundred and thirty-one dollars and seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. So this is a funding through South Dakota Housing Development Authority, but it is federal funding that's a pass through from the state.
Any questions on that? Any questions for the public? I need a motion on nineteen.
Move approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan. Item number twenty is consider a motion to authorize the inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the building fund.
My name is Ben Kite, Auditor's Office, here today to, as I said, authorize the inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the building fund. State statute requires that the general fund balance not exceed forty percent of subsequent years of budget appropriations. So as a result of twenty-two intergovernmental transfers, we expect that we're going to be exceeding that forty percent general fund limitation at year end. So we're recommending that the commission allow the auditor's office to, or authorize the auditor's office to transfer ten million dollars from the general fund to the building fund that would be assigned for future building needs in the county. This assignment will allow for reassignment of those funds to a different fund or use in the future if the county needs.
Any questions for Ben on that transfer? We've actually done this, I think, maybe once in the past.
We've done this once before.
Yep. Any questions from the public on this? Need a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
The motion is second with roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-one is consider a motion to authorize the inter-fund transfer from the general fund to the COSAP fund. Susan.
Yes, our COSAP fund is entirely funded with federal grant dollars, but we do see reimbursement a quarter in arrears. Due to a number of contractual obligations, we had to make payment on those contracts before the end of the year, therefore creating a negative cash balance in that fund, thus requiring us to do an inter-fund transfer. At the completion of this grant, we will get those dollars transferred back into the general fund. This is just essentially a timing issue that this inter-fund transfer will help solve.
Questions for Susan on the COSAP grant? Any questions from the audience? Motion, please. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
The motion is second. Roll call vote.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-two is consider a motion to authorize the inter-fund transfer from general funds to twenty-four-seven sobriety fund.
Yes, today we are asking your approval to do an inter-fund transfer of seventy thousand dollars from the general fund to the twenty-four-seven sobriety fund. Prior to twenty-twenty-one, that fund was self-sustaining. But with the COVID pandemic, the nature of the program has changed and the funding is the, the ratio of how the funding is working is a little bit different. And so therefore, the county is having to use general funds to help supplement that fund. And so currently, this fund is at a negative cash balance.
Are there any questions on that? Questions from the public? A motion, please. Motion.
You got it.
Okay.
I'll second. I do have a question.
Yes.
That second bullet point, testing fees are regulated by the state, but the cost for testing supplies is the county's responsibility. So they control the price and we just get to pay it is?
I believe that's how that works. Mike Mattson's here.
Okay. It just seems like another unfunded mandate, you know? You guys get to do this and we're not going to help you with it.
Yeah. Mike Mattson, Warden of the Minnehaw County Jail. That is correct. The fees that we charge are regulated by state statute. So any changes in that regard would have to come from the legislature.
Just wondering. Thank you.
I have a motion and a second on the twenty-four-seven sobriety funds. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-three is consider a motion to authorize inter-fund transfers from general fund to emergency management fund.
Yes, as part of our annual budget process, the commission approves an inter-fund transfer to, to balance the emergency management fund. As you may recall, there is a federal grant that helps pay for emergency management fund, but it only covers a portion of those expenses. And so the county helps supplement the rest of that. So therefore, we are asking your approval for the budgeted transfer amount of two hundred and sixty thousand, three hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Questions for Susan? Questions from the audience? Motion, please.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-four is consider a motion to authorize inter-fund transfer from the ARPA funds to the general fund, highway fund, and the twenty-four-seven fund.
Yes, the total amount of our request is one million, eight hundred and twelve thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars that will be transferred into the funds as listed on, on the briefing memo. The, the ARPA dollars allows for retention incentives, including reasonable compensation increase as an enumerated eligible expense under the, the award. And as you may recall, the county authorized a matrix adjustment on April second that helped address ongoing and increasing retention and turnover issues within the county. And so therefore, we are asking to transfer those dollars out of the ARPA fund to help reimburse the general fund for those expenditures.
Questions for Susan? Questions from the audience?
Yeah. And so like I said, the, the last statement, I just said it would be transferred to the general fund, but it would be transferred into those three different funds as listed.
Look for a motion.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion is second. Roll call vote.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Hi Burger.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-five is the twenty-two budget supplements using the personnel savings.
Yes, we had one department requesting to use personnel savings to help cover deficits in their other expenditure section of their budget as per policy that can only be used with commission approval. There is a briefing memo attached from Tracy Smith, the director of that department for the public defender department. She's requesting fifty thousand dollars of personnel savings. I believe we have someone from that department here if you have questions for them.
Any questions for Susan or the public defenders office? Any questions for Susan or the Public Defender's Office? Any questions from the public?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Burr. Kerski, excuse me? I'm sorry.
He should be offended, not me. Not specifically on this one action here, Susan, but on the last, I don't know, eight, nine, ten things that we've done. I mean, we're just moving a lot of money around. There's been really the net sum zero. Is that a correct perception of what we've done?
With the exception of probably the first item where we had the public hearing of budget supplements, those are items that we were over budget for that department and needed those budget supplements to fund that.
But most of the rest of this is moving money from this expense to that expense just to balance our books.
Correct, or they were maybe grant or donation items where they were unbudgeted to begin with, but we had dollars coming in, and per statute, we don't have to have that as part of a budget, a public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions from the public? Then we need a motion on number twenty-five, which is use of personnel savings.
So moved.
Second.
The motion is second, roll call vote.
Bennega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Thanks, Susan, that was a lot. Item number twenty-six is authorize the chairman to sign the animal control contract for twenty twenty-three. Tyler.
Good morning, Tyler Platt, Commission Office. Before you is an annual update or an annual renewal of the twenty twenty-three contract for animal control services. This is with the Sioux Falls Area Humane Society, who's held this contract for a number of years. The dollar amount, as noted in the memo, is the same as twenty twenty-two of forty-seven thousand dollars. And just to note that if the contract does stipulate that if that number, if the budget exceeds eighty percent of the total, then we'll get together with the Humane Society and kind of figure out where we're headed. But before you is a motion to consider authorizing this twenty twenty-three contract.
Questions for Tyler? Questions from the public?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion as second, roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-seven is authorize the chairman to sign the mobile crisis team contract for twenty twenty-three.
This is another annual update with Southeastern Behavioral Healthcare, who currently serves as our provider for mobile crisis team services. Again, the dollar amount from twenty twenty-two is the same as it will be in twenty twenty-three, and they will be performing on-call as needed mental health professional services for the county.
Questions for Tyler? Questions from the public? Motion?
So moved. Bennega. Second, comment.
Second with a comment, Commissioner Burr?
You know, I think that there's a perception that we don't do enough in this area, but we work at it, you know? Just since I've been on the commission, we've had things like this come up. We've got the Safe Home, we've got, you know, the Bishop Dudley House. These are all in partnership or actually a full product of Minnehaw County, and I don't know if any other counties are doing the mobile crisis stuff, but we've done it, and that's my comment.
When I've been traveling or working with other counties in other states and across the United States on criminal justice stuff, mobile crisis teams come up a lot, and they're like, this is the newest, greatest thing, and we've actually been doing it a long time, and so I'd say we were on the leading edge of figuring out ways to address crisis in our community and also keep those people out of the jail if possible, but trying to de-escalate the situations in the people's homes and figuring out where's the best place for them. Is it jail? Is it home? Or is it psychiatric care? So it has been very successful here, and it's interesting that across the United States, now those things are really starting to bubble up and they're getting used to other places. Was there any questions? Well, Commissioner Bennigan, I'm sorry.
The other thing I'd point out, I mean, one is I'm just struck by how cost-effective this program is. And secondly, this is, we see statistics on this every month. They get, we don't always talk about them because a lot of times on the consent agenda, but we do monitor to see how well this program is working, and it's tremendously successful, the amount of diversions that they're able to do to keep people at home and de-escalate the situation are incredible, and we get feedback from law enforcement as well, and they're also very pleased with the program. So a lot of times we end up talking about things that are very challenging or somewhat discouraging occasionally, and this is a real bright spot, I think.
So I have a motion and a second on the mobile crisis team contract. Roll call vote, please.
Bennega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-eight is authorize the chairman to sign the CCOD Metropolitan Planning Organization Agreement for twenty twenty-three. Tyler.
This is another annual update that we do with Southeastern Council of Governments, who provide the Metropolitan Planning Organization services. This helps to provide partial funding for county projects. I believe this year we're expected to get about seventy-one thousand dollars as a sub-recipient of this program, and again, the request would be for you to authorize the chair to sign this agreement.
Questions for Tyler? Questions from the public? Motion, please.
I would make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion as second, roll call vote.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-nine is consider a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three Financial Action Network Project Charter.
So it's a little more fun. So on November first, the commission reviewed a draft of the Financial Action Network Charter, and before you today is an updated version of that with a full list of the membership, and updated updates to the goals, some of the project milestones. Mostly that's just wordsmithing, there's no substantive changes there, but we have three meetings on the books for January and February, and we hope to present that final presentation sometime in March or April.
Is there any questions on that? Commissioner Kerski.
I'm looking forward to this. I'm kind of been given, I think, enviable task of working with this group, and I'm looking, I'm excited about it. I will not be the chair of this. The group will elect their own chair, but we've got members like the president of CCOD, the business director for the Sioux Falls School District, numerous CEOs, CFOs, CPAs, and other people, and this is just a great opportunity for our community to know more about our budgeting and our process and our sources of funds and what it really takes to manage the finances of the county. And it's not just us making these decisions, but we have another, what, ten sets of eyes looking at all this, and it's purely advisory, non-binding, but I'm excited about the people that are agreed to sign on and looking forward to the process over the next few months. It's a great opportunity, so. And it's a great way for our community, our citizens, to actually be involved in it too, because it's not, it's all the people that they know, their neighbors and people they work with, so I think it's a great way for transparency in government.
Commissioner Kerski did this letup or was part of this group a few years ago. I think it was kind of his brainchild, and it was very successful for us last time, and we have new people and some old, not old, but returning members of that group, and it's a really good idea, so. Any other comments from the commission? Any comments from the public? Need a motion?
Move for approval. Second.
A motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number thirteen is authorize the chairman to sign an agreement for mental health legal representation. Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners, Carol Muller, Commission Office. A year and a half ago, we put a contract in place with, we're the private attorney here in town, to do the representation of respondents on mental health holds. In other words, if you are the person placed on a mental health hold who is representing you. And we had been using the Public Defender's Office and Public Advocate's Office when there was a conflict that was on there. We've streamlined it quite a bit through this contract, it's worked out well, and this is the annual contract. The rate would go from two thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars a month to two thousand nine hundred dollars a month. Any questions I can answer for you?
Any questions for Carol? Questions for the audience?
Excuse me.
Motion?
So moved.
Second. I have a motion as second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those who follow the same sign, motion passes unanimously. Then we're going back to item eight A. Authorize the sheriff's office to submit an application for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two SCAAP grant, which we talked about a little bit earlier.
Good morning, Commissioners, Joe Bosman, Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. This morning, I have a request for our office to apply for what we call the SCAP grant, stands for State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. It's a program that we've annually been participating in with the sheriff's office through the Bureau of Justice Assistance. What it is, is we take into account the expenses that our jail incurs while housing individuals that have an unknown or potentially illegal status in their country, that we can submit those expenses and days that they've been in our jail to the federal government and receive some sort of compensation back for our expenses incurred. Generally, we receive right around forty-two to forty-four thousand dollars out of this program. It's quite extensive work, data-driven, but we find value in it, and so we ask your acceptance to apply for it again this year.
Any questions? Commissioner Burr?
Joe, we don't have to split this equitably with the city, do we?
No, this one is all ours.
Baby.
Any other questions? Any questions from the audience?
I make a motion to approve this. Approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second, roll call vote.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is authorize the commission chairman to sign the twenty twenty-three vehicle lease agreement with Vernide Motor Cars Incorporated.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Josh Phillips, Captain with the sheriff's office. Just looking to your approval for the contract with Vernide for one year. Excuse me, these funds are basically reimbursed by HIDA. We have two detectives that qualify under the HIDA. This is the same agreement that the city of Sioux Falls is in, so the monetary amount is identical to what their agreement is also. The unique thing about this is these individuals that get these cars sometimes switch out every two weeks, every month, maybe three months, and so it's a unique contract with them, and I think with the times of the used market for vehicles, it's a fair contract for this year. Any questions?
No questions? Questions from the audience? Okay, then we need a motion. Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion as second with a roll call vote.
Bennega.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Kerski.
Aye.
Heiburger.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Item number thirty, or excuse me, thirty-one is recognition of retiring elected officials, Commissioner Barth, Commissioner Heiburger, and Register of Deeds Julie Risti. He's here.
Actually, I will just probably kick us off by saying, this is our very last week for three elected officials who chose not to run again for office, Commissioner Heiburger, Commissioner Barth, and Register of Deeds Julie Risti. So we have had parties for everybody, we've had nice recognition events where we've had fun with it, but we wanted to do one last official recognition today, and I've asked Vice Chairman Jean Bender if she would present those.
Yes, so I have gifts for each one of you. I would just like to, now I am going to get emotional, last week I didn't get emotional. This is a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge that is walking out our door, and we are going to miss all of you a lot. And last week, I think it seemed okay because you're going to be here this week. Next week, you won't be here, but I would very much like to thank Commissioners Heiburger and Barth for their many, many, many years of service together. And just as a point of personal privilege, thank you both because you guys trained me up, and I wouldn't be here without both of you. And for Julie Risti, I'm going to walk around and hand out some gifts, but I would, you have been a shining star for the county, folks that have to deal with you day in and day out. No, what a well-run shop you have down there, what a loyal team you've put together, and you can graciously say no better than anybody I know how. You're very good at keeping our, a tremendous amount of work is done by the Register of Deeds that most people have no idea, and so thank you very much. I'm going to walk around, deliver gifts, and I'm going to let the other commissioners speak if they would like to.
Commissioner Burr?
I just want to say that Jean Bender was one of the easiest commissioners to train.
Jeff, I know you had some comments, did you want to say them or did you want to wait?
Sure, if you don't mind.
Yep, that, we can do them.
I just want to thank the county employees, especially this weekend, we've been thinking about the highway department, the sheriff's department, the correctional officers, the fire and ambulance volunteer people, and all the others, the department heads, the line employees, Julie, Cindy, Gerald, Jean, Dean, especially Melinda. I seriously meant to say that, and then she walked in. Apropos, you got the cue from Tony, right?
That's right.
In any case, a couple of comments I'd like to make also, which is, words of wisdom for the newbies, make a motion or second motion, otherwise we just sit here. Make a motion, second motion, you've seen me do it. And, you know, we think about the good old days, the good old days when I served with Gerald. Wait a minute. I remember the good old days when I was in the army, or were they that good? My memory fades, but these are the good old days, and the new good old days start tomorrow. Keep that in mind. Thank you.
Julie, did you want to say something?
Now, good morning, Commissioners. I just want to say what a pleasure it has been to work with our county commission for the last twenty years. I wasn't going to say how many years it's been, but you've all been just tremendously professional, knowledgeable, it's just been a pleasure in so many ways. Thank you, it's been an honor to serve the county, to not have had to have a runoff election every four years. I'm just very, very honored, so thank you so much, and I wish you all the best, and all the best for the new Register of Deeds who's coming in, Amanda Halsey, she will do great, I know it, and I will see you all, even though I'm disappearing from the administration building, I'll be around, so thank you all so much.
Thanks, Julie. And I'm also going to jump right in and just say, you know, I want to thank all of our staff.
staff. I said this last week too, that you come in and you don't know what you're getting to work with when you get elected and it's been amazing. Every, every person I've encountered has just been helpful. They love their jobs. They, they always try to make us look better and feel better, even if we make mistake or make decisions they don't like. No decision is really a bad decision, it's just a decision you now have to live with and so you have to move on. So remember that, new commissioners who are sitting here that just make a decision like Jeff said. You know, it's been a privilege and an honor to be elected several times by our county and so I want to say thank you to our constituents out there that put their trust in us to lead the county and it has been a pleasure and it's been really fun. There have been days when it's been really stressful, but it is a very fun job and I will always remember the great times that we've had. Thank you to the elected officials. Everyone has different personalities, but we get along really well and we can work together and we can make good decisions together. And Julie, I'll miss you too. It's just, you could pop in in Julie's office and she's down there and she's just quiet, but she's holding up a huge, another part of our county that people are probably not really aware of. And then I want to thank my fellow commissioners because even though you may think you learned from Jeff and I, we learned a lot from all of you too. I remember sitting in Jeff's chair when I was a brand-new commissioner in the other room and watching Commissioner Bennega all the time, trying to figure out, okay, I could do this better and I could do this better. And so I've learned a lot from him. Jeff was my go-to to say, do I need to go to this meeting? Do I need to do this? And so Jeff did a lot of training of me too, so anything I did wrong, blame it on Jeff. So he's the one who told me. But it's been a pleasure and an honor and thank you all and I wish you all the best as you continue to go forward, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you to our wizard in the closet. Couldn't do this without him either, so thanks, Tony. All right, I made it through without crying. I said it was my party and I was going to cry if I wanted to, but I didn't, so. Public comment, this is an opportunity if anybody wants to speak at public comment. Okay, and then we have liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports from last week? Jeff?
Madam Chair, you know, I'm on the East Dakota Water Development District and I think that that is the biggest issue we have going forward is water. You know what they say, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. And if we don't get more water, our population, our opportunity for economic development will cease. And so going forward, it's probably the biggest issue we have, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Other liaisons? Commissioner Bennega?
I attended a metro management meeting last week, which was extensive and long and frankly, addressed a lot of things in the exact for this time, for this point. But anyway, there's always the continuing conversations about trying to get people trained up to speed and running so that they're able to maintain the metro communications process. I thought about that a lot over the last couple of days because of the fact that they took a lot of calls, I'm sure, and they did a lot of dispatching. We're lucky to have a group that works together, but we need more people. And we're still working on how to find that solution. That's all I had for this time.
Okay. Anybody else? Commissioner Kerski?
I was supposed to be at the metro management meeting, but I was in peer for the State Association of County Commissioners meeting, which was postponed from the prior week. Drove up Tuesday night, we met Wednesday for four hours, took care of a lot of the routine business of the state association, but we also had an extended, probably a couple hours just looking at upcoming legislation that will be happening. I'm not going to go into the details. If anybody has questions, you can ask me. We did have a presentation by the governor's policy, I believe Director, I believe his name is Josh, I can't remember, I'm sorry, terrible that I didn't bring it here, but basically took time to brief our organization on one of the governor's budget proposals on FMLA and maternity leave and that type of thing, going from a, an unfunded benefit that we provide with an unknown quantity, how much will we have to pay, to maybe going to an insured type of plan through like an AFLAC or that type of program where we just pay a portion of our, or a percentage of our payroll costs and then it's funded through that program. So, and it's going to be offered to all the municipalities, the states, or the school districts, et cetera. So it might be something we want to consider. It would be totally voluntary on the county's part, but it would be, I suggested that I would, would like to see the numbers because our human resources director, Carrie Dever, does a great job of digging into those numbers and looking at it. So I, you know, just to see what, what it would mean for us because it could be a benefit and it might not be, so. And then following the meeting, I had a harrowing four and a half hour ride through the, yeah, back to Sioux Falls. I was going to spend the night, but if I did, I probably wouldn't have made it home till Saturday. But yeah, it was one of the most interesting drives on Highway 83 that you could ever possibly fathom, so.
Glad you're home safe.
Yep.
Any other liaison reports?[1678.65]